All right, we're going to begin today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
We have a closed session on the agenda here at four o'clock. Madam Counselor, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Items A through F will be heard in closed session. I do expect one announcement out, but that will be done this evening at 6:30 at the alternative site.
Very good. Are there any public comments on closed session? Seeing none, we will reconvene at 6:30 at the Ivanhoe Elementary School Cafeteria at 16030 Avenue, 332 in Ivanhoe. We'll see you in a bit. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We will begin Tulare County Board of Supervisors' meeting. Madam Counselor, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. This is Deanne Peterson, County Council, reporting out on item E. The Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to initiate litigation. After the motion or the complaint is formally commenced, the title and nature of the action, the defendants and other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so it jeopardize county's ability to effectuate service of process and one or more unserved parties or would jeopardize the county's ability to conclude the existing negotiations to its advantage. The roll call vote was on the motion of Supervisor Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. It's a 5-0 vote. That concludes the reporting out for today.
Thank you. And with that, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Valero and then followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take up our first item on today's agenda, which is Board of Supervisors Matters. And we'll start with Supervisor Townsend.
Aha, caught me off guard. All right, hello. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Just a couple of things. What I've been up to, on Friday, we had our Habitat for Humanity Golf Tournament for Tulare Kings County up at River Island. And haven't heard the money count yet, but it was a good attendance and it was a beautiful day. And so I'm sure we raised a lot of money for a good cause so we can get some more homes built for Habitat for Humanity. On Saturday was Pioneer Days in Porterville, and that's just a day where everybody tries to dress up Western and do a few reenactments. There was a Zalad Historical House there in Porterville with everybody dressed up. I was called on to be the sheriff of the day, and so had my sheriff's outfit on, just arresting any and every passerby and throwing them in our little hogwire jail. And had a lot of good photo ops, just a lot of fun with the people. I did arrest the mayor of Porterville, just because we were right across from City Hall, so I thought that was appropriate. Monday, spent some time with our district attorney, Tim Ward, in a fundraising golf tournament here in Visalia. Had a good time, did lousy as far as golf, but it was a good time with the people in the area. And then this Thursday, I'll be hosting a town hall out in Terabella for anyone that would like to attend. Be the third town hall that I've hosted, and looking forward to that on Thursday at 6:00 at Carl Smith Middle School. And Saturday and Sunday, if you've never been to Springville for the Apple Festival, that is coming up this coming Saturday and Sunday all day long, lots of good food, apple-themed mostly, and then some crafts and things as well. We usually have 25,000, 30,000 people will show up in Springville for that. So come on up either day and have a good time. One of the perks with this job, or one of the tough parts of this job, I guess, is I have to be one of the apple pie judges that day. So I'll be doing my duty for the county that day on Saturday. And that's all I have to report on. Mr. Chair.
Very good. Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. First of all, this last weekend, there were some significant events in and around the Tulare area. First of all, I will say that the Relay for Life in Tulare was a very, very successful event, well-attended. And that event actually raised over $150,000. The total is not finalized yet. So our superintendent was there of the school office of education, and his daughter was a wonderful singer of the national anthem. She brought up a suggestion of us singing a duet, and I'm glad that I had declined that request. But a great event, and sure, it was great to see out there, Tim. And then that evening, there was a light, or I'm sorry, an event for the Salt and Light Foundation in Tulare, which is setting out to create a tiny home village for homeless residents in this community, in this county. And it was incredibly well-attended. There were over 400 people there inside of the city of Tulare at someone's residence. It was residents. It was pretty incredible. Couple of public meetings I wanted to highlight this evening. TACERA, the county retirement board, will be having its investment committee meeting tomorrow at 3:30 at the TACERA office. Tomorrow evening in Alpa, there's a resource fair being put on with a collaboration through the Valley Innovative Energy Watch or View Partnership. Want to thank all the county departments and organizations that are participating to help make that event possible, always very well-attended, whether you're getting a flu shot or information about energy efficiency. There's great reason to come out there for that great event, and it's held at the Alpa School. Then also, I have a meeting later this week. I know a real concern in a lot of communities, specifically Early Mart, is the lack of housing. And I have a meeting upcoming this week with a developer specifically discussing a housing project that is on the horizon, affordable housing in the community of Early Mart. All the folks at RMA know how difficult it is to attract housing in that community due to some infrastructure deficiencies, but really hope there's some positive outcomes there. And then lastly, just wanted to make mention of a public meeting that will be taking place next Monday at the Lindsay Wellness Center at 1:00. That's for the Tulare County Association of Governments, their monthly meeting. So I hope everyone is doing well. Great to see a wonderful turnout here this evening.
Very good. Supervisor Shucklian?
Thank you. I'll start with last Friday. I don't even need that. Last Friday, I along with Visalia Mayor Bob Link and Trevor Lewis from Assembly of Memphis's office, did a presentation for the new leadership Visalia group, talked a little bit about what each of our entities does and how we got involved in elected office. So that was, that's always a good thing to talk to hopefully some future leaders of Visalia, both business and maybe political, who knows. I also attended the launch party for the Salt and Light Foundation. And as Supervisor Vanderpoel said, it was attended by over 400 people. And the nice thing was, is I, you know, I've always said this, I chaired the task force on homelessness. There's no one entity in the county that's going to solve this problem. And unfortunately, it's never going to be solved, but we have a lot of pieces to the puzzle. And Salt and Light Foundation is one of those pieces, what they're going to be doing. So I look forward to what's in store for them and to continue working on at least moving the needle, as we say, with our homeless problem. Yesterday, we had our KT AAA, which is a Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging, and we had that in, we drove to Hanford, Supervisor Valero and this guy here.
This guy over here.
Yeah, this guy here, Vanderpoel. And then in the afternoon, I chaired our Health Advisory Committee meeting, which we had some great presentations. We had one by Katie Meter, who is the Executive Director of Family Services, which provides a lot of help for our domestic violence victims throughout Tulare County. And then we had a short presentation about the recent dangers of vaping. So we will hear more about that. This morning, I attended a groundbreaking at St. Charles Catholic Church, which is at the corner of Acres and Caldwell. They're going to begin construction on that. And once that is completed, Acres and Caldwell will have a church on every corner. So some folks call it Amen Acres, and so it will definitely be that. So, and that's a good thing for all folks who want to worship, there's plenty of places. Tomorrow morning, we will have our Public Arts Committee meeting. This has been a launch that all the board has supported to put more public arts out into the art community. Last month, we now have an installation at Government Plaza out on South Mooney Boulevard. And our next vision is to have some public art right in our board chambers there at Administration. Also, Friday morning, I will be doing the welcome for our CSAC Institute. If anybody's taken the class, I will be there to welcome you. And then on Sunday, I will be at the former Sons of Italy Hall, which is now, has been remodeled into Bello Vita Avenue. But the Sons of Italy will still have events there, and I will be presenting the proclamation for Italian Heritage Month. So I look forward to all of that.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Buenas noches. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank our county staff for being here this evening and taking time out of your schedule to listen to the concerns of our residents in this community of Ivanhoe. First, I'd like to apologize for my absence last week, as I was in San Francisco for the LTX Fest. And it's an event focused on technology, innovation, and business. This event was sponsored by the Capore Center as well as Latino Community Foundation and Latinas in Tech to create space for visionaries to convene, share, and build strategies that continue to revolutionize the tech industry, philanthropy, and to build resilience for California. I then drove after that speaking engagement, and I drove to Goshen to hold a town hall meeting that evening, where our county staff was able to engage with residents on issues pertinent to them. I again want to thank our county staff for your hard work, commitment, and willingness to go above and beyond your call of duty to make our county great. And I know that at that town hall, and like others that I've hosted in District Four, the RMA, Resource Management Agency, and the Sheriff's Department tend to be the most popular departments at the town halls. I attended the Government Affairs Committee for the Dinuba Chamber and shared Districts Four happenings in the area. Last Wednesday, I also had the opportunity to be the keynote speaker for the Central Valley Latino Leadership Academy at the University House in Fresno. On Friday, I attended the Business Breakfast Tour with Jeff Henderson, former marketing executive of Chick-fil-A and Atlanta Braves. It was an amazing discussion that was focused on branding and ways to unpack what you're for. And so he shared from his book, and the book that he has is Know What You're For: A Growth Strategy for Work and an Even Better Strategy for Life. I also had a very busy Saturday. So I attended the Woodlake Botanical Gardens fundraiser banquet. Really big thanks to Emmanuel Jimenez and his team for the amazing work that they do voluntary to keep this beautiful botanical gardens in Woodlake thriving. And so people come from all over just to walk through the botanical gardens, and it is beautiful. I then went to the Lions Club Classic Car Night in Cutler, and then in Cutler Rosie, and then finished off the evening at the Alta Historical Society Auction, where I got to be right next to Roseanne Vuich's vehicle, which if you don't know who Roseanne Vuich is, she was the first state senator, female first state senator in California and right here in the Central Valley. I also had the opportunity to welcome students who applied for the #LEAD program, a program that provides college and career opportunities to youth who are recipients of cash aid and/or are in foster care. And so I also got to participate in the interview process, which was very great. I attended the Kiwanis International Dinner yesterday to recognize new leadership in the organization. I also met with Leadership Council a few days ago with regards to affordable housing, so I'm glad that Supervisor Vanderpoel brought that up. As we know, housing is somewhat of a difficult and constrained to a lot of families, not only in cities and in unincorporated communities, but especially in communities like Ivanhoe. So it was a great meeting to discuss what are the possibilities for that. I also had the opportunity to attend a North Tulare County Water Alliance phone call conversation on Monday, which was rather uneventful, really hard, still working on viable solutions across our unincorporated communities in District Four, but too many challenges at play. However, we will continue to work with the various entities and with the State Water Board to make sure that our small communities have the water and drinking, the reliable drinking water that is needed in our communities. My upcoming meetings include public art selection as Supervisor Shucklian mentioned, and that will be focused on our board chambers, which I'm excited, so that we get to spruce up board chambers. We have another Northern Tulare County Water Alliance on Wednesday, which is tomorrow, and excited to include new representation from the Yerem Seville CSD. So they will be joining us at the table to find out how we can work together for water solutions. I along with our Chief of Staff will also be attending a legislative roundtable with Senator Harris's office in Fresno. So looking forward to learning from and sharing with the Senator's office on issues impacting our southern San Joaquin Valley. And then two more, just one. I have a Kings River East GSA meeting on Thursday, and then, actually, three more. And then doing the #LEAD program interviews and welcome in Dinuba, and then a Law Library Committee meeting on the 21st of this month, along with our TCAG meeting in Lindsay next Monday. And that is all I have.
Very good. Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is our final evening meeting of the year, and we've taken our board meetings, we've done a little bit of a roadshow. We started out in Strathmore. We also went to Pixley and Springville, and now here to Ivanhoe. So it's, I think it's very important to be able to engage with all of you and have an opportunity for you guys to interact with us and give an opportunity where it's not quite so easy to attend a 9:00 AM meeting on Tuesday mornings in Visalia. So coming out is, I think it is an important step to reaching out to all of you. And thank you, staff, for indulging us as we go along on these, on these meetings. Today, I had a meeting with CAGI. It's a group of, it's a, it's a, it's a group of businesses and business interests, agricultural interests throughout the San Joaquin Valley that focus on air quality issues and the impacts. They are, they regularly attend the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board. And so they were meeting here at, at the Tulare County Farm Bureau office today. And so I had the opportunity to meet with them and to discuss some of the issues of significance for them. Starting tomorrow, tomorrow and Thursday, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, we're having our annual board retreat. It's, we'll be discussing multiple topics as far as the direction of the air board for next year, focus areas. And things that I'm really interested in is, the air board has, they do regular studies, academic research-type studies. And one area of focus that we're looking at is the impacts of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act as it relates to air quality, and how that could potentially sigma, how it could be potentially very detrimental to PM10, which is primarily dust, as more land is probably going to be fallowed. And so, you know, making sure that we have research that backs that up. So then we talk with the state of California to say, here's an impact that you may not have thought of, and there is a health impact to our communities, as well as a financial impact to our communities. And making sure that they see sigma for, from a holistic standpoint. There's other groups, including the Water Blueprint for the San Joaquin Valley, that's also meeting this week, that they're looking at it from a more of a holistic standpoint, as far as the, the negative impacts of sigma beyond just the loss of agriculture and jobs. But what does that look like to our social services as far as lost jobs, additional people that need financial assistance, either through food stamps, through welfare to work programs, et cetera, to make sure that we have vibrant communities. So I, I think it's really important, because many times we know that Sacramento creates laws, but they don't always look at the unintended consequences of those laws. Now, on the surface, they may not be all that bad, but there's, there's many times unintended consequences. So that's our goal, is to try and bring awareness to some of these other issues, so that ultimately, we can get some more surface water and protect our agriculture. This Friday, Supervisor Townsend has set up a meeting with the Forest Service, and he's been happy to oblige me by allowing me to participate in that meeting with our local forest supervisor. So I'm looking forward to that and finding some areas where we can partner with them, and looking at projects where we can help out our local industry, as well as make sure that we have healthy forests. Again, not only to reduce fire risk for our mountain communities, but also from an air quality standpoint, from a water quality standpoint, as well as a water production standpoint. So all those things are very important when talking about healthy forests. And then I'll, also, I'll be attending the TCAG board meeting next Monday. And the only thing I want to highlight is I, I know that staff has been working on, and our Executive Director will get more of an update on Monday, but our Executive Director for TCAG, Ted Smalley, has been advocating on all of our behalfs on trying to get restored monies for Highway 99. The state of California and Caltrans had proposed removing dollars from the widening of 99 through the city of Tulare. And our staff, as well as other elected officials at state level, have advocated for, not only a couple of weeks ago in Modesto, but also today in Irvine, advocating again at another public hearing to try and restore that. There's many talks with staff at the California Transportation Commission and with commission members. And it's not looking as gloomy as, as it was a couple of weeks ago, but that doesn't mean that we're going to stop our full court press. And until there's a final decision in December, I know that this board and other local agencies will be having letters of support to try and restore those dollars, so that we make sure we get dollars for Highway 99 that were committed several years ago, and that we just hold people accountable. So that's that. And with that, we'll go to item number two, present a proclamation recognizing the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to say thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. My name is Tony Calvin. I'm with the Tulare County Office of Education Choices Programs. And the Tulare County Red Ribbon Planning Committee has asked me to address today on their behalf. For the 10th straight year, the Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Health and Human Service Agency are collaborating to spread the Red Ribbon Week message throughout Tulare County. A special thank you to our partners, Visalia Unified School, Pulse After School Program, NCAD, Family Healthcare Network, and Turning Point. The Red Ribbon Planning Committee consists of community partners and many motivated youth representing local efforts and prevention programs throughout Tulare County. Red Ribbon Week has become one of the most visible prevention awareness campaigns observed annually. It gives opportunity for schools, organizations, and communities to make a visible stand against alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and show their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle through the symbol of a red ribbon. So at this time, we'd like to show you a video that was put together by Visalia Unified School District's Pulse After School Program.
Hey, want some drinks? Where are we going? I got the message.
All right, thank you. So this year, the committee members selected to adopt the National Red Ribbon Week is send a message, stay drug-free, as a social theme for Tulare County. At this time, which has already happened, we'd like to present the board members' red ribbons and a special invitation to the 10th Annual Red Ribbon Week Celebration. Celebration takes place Wednesday, October 30th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Visalia Convention. The red ribbons are for you to wear to show your support during Tulare County Red Ribbon Week, which is October 21st through the 25th for Tulare County, but nationally, it's celebrated October 23rd through the 31st. In closing, we continue to thank the County Board of Supervisors for their support, service, and commitment to a drug-free prevention programs. We ask that you continue supporting students and families in discovering the way, the many ways and resources and activities to stay drug-free, not just for a week, but for a life. I also like to leave behind the postcards to have. I'll leave some on the table, so you can help yourself. The postcards on the way out, and this is the t-shirts that their students put together this year to wear during Red Ribbon Week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. I'll read here, and then we can give a presentation after that. This is proclamation recognizing the week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the United States has reached epidemic stages, and whereas early substance abuse increases the likelihood of a person developing psychiatric disorders in his or her late twenties, and whereas it is imperative that visible, unified, and preventative educational efforts by community members be launched to help eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas rates of past year alcohol and illicit drug use were lower for youth who had seen or heard drug and alcohol prevention messages in the past year compared to youth who had not seen or heard drug or alcohol prevention messages at school, and whereas teens are affected by the influences in their lives such as family, neighborhood, school, and community. When parents, educators, law enforcement, faith-based organizations, and community members unite in opposing illicit drugs, young people are much less likely to engage in drug use. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in both Tulare County and throughout the United States during the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2019, and whereas to help achieve this goal, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the National Family Partnership, and the Tulare County Department of Mental Health, Alcohol, and Other Drugs Division invite to participate in the Red Ribbon Week 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County, and call upon all citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and drug prevention activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Signed, October 15th, 2019, Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. We will now go on to item three, public comments. This is a time for any member of the public to speak on anything that is within the board's jurisdiction, but not on tonight's agenda. I do have several requests for public comment, and we will start with Mr. Don Jensen. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Don, Donald Jensen. My wife's Susan. Our address is 29268 Road 156. Like to read this, like to... We live between two illegal-for-profit party farms that have no permits since May. I've gone to the I've gone to the RMA office and made them aware of these continual parties, sent multiple videos of these parties, and also decimal readings from my decimal meter. For four or five months now, I've called the sheriff and they've come out on multiple occasions and a formal complaint has filed, and I've had very good response with the Sheriff Department. The address of these, the addresses of the places that have no permits are 29198 Road 156, approximately 400 yards from our home, and 29328 Road 156, approximately 200 yards from our home. Neither property is anywhere near the 20-acre limit requirement for having a party barn. Weekend after weekend, the people who live at these addresses continue to have the incredible loud parties with music so loud that we can feel the vibrations through the walls, floorboards of our house at times, even vibrating the pictures on our walls. In August, our attorney sent out a letter describing our situation and asking that something be done to relieve us from these illegal activities. He sent this letter out to our district supervisor and other county officials. To this date, we have not had one response from any individual in response to this letter. I have copies of the letter that I've given to the clerk if you'd like to see them. Nearly every weekend, illegal parties are occurring. Thirty so far this year, 20 since June 23rd. These two properties really like to know what needs to be done so that these two properties comply with Tulare County codes and laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Box.
If I may, Chair. We have responded and worked with Dawn over the last few months, and I believe the sheriff has some new things they are doing if you'd like to discuss as far as our noise ordinance.
Very good.
My name is Gary Marks. I'm lieutenant with the sheriff's office at the Visey Substation. Prior to a few months ago, our procedure was to take a report and submit it to the district attorney's office for review, and we all know that a lot of times those cases are not filed. So we decided rather than beating our head against the barn, we're going to try something new. So we looked into the county ordinances and we found county ordinance 3-07-1100 (C), 3 or 4. It's called loud and raucous noise. What we're going to start doing is issuing the person with the loud music a citation, and then they're going to have to go before the commissioner and Visey and explain their case. And hopefully this will alleviate this, and if the commissioner decides that there's going to be something there, it's going to give them a fine. Hopefully with enough fines, they'll stop. But that's our plan of attack.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next request for public comment, we have, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name, but Ms. Glover Adianca. Please state your name and address for the record.
Adianca Glover. I am a staff attorney with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. First and foremost, I did want to say thank you for coming specifically to Ivanhoe to have one of your board of supervisors' meetings at a time and location that I'm sure is more convenient for Ivanhoe residents, especially those who are working and spending time with their families. So being able to have a meeting more locally has been very beneficial, and I hope these types of meetings continue. I wanted to speak a little bit about one of the priorities of the Ivanhoe Community Group that has been mentioned to our organization, and that is affordable housing, wanting more single-family homes, but also multifamily homes in Ivanhoe. There are various state grants that are available for affordable housing. It's my understanding that the county has already applied for Senate Bill 2, which in its first year is a planning grant, which would benefit and help with creating and preserving more affordable housing throughout the county. I also wanted to highlight another affordable housing source, which is the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant Program, which is offered through Strategic Growth Council. We have an upcoming meeting with some county staff as well as some other strategic partners to hopefully bring together all the right people to apply for the fifth round of the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant. What is very unique about this grant and beneficial is it not only brings affordable housing, but it also pairs it with different transit and other walkable neighborhood investments. And so, again, not only the affordable housing, but other priority needs for residents. And so, just wanted to make that comment here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Myra Basera.
My name is Myra Basera, and my address is 15966 Avenue 327, Ivanhoe. I wanted to first of all say thank you. I appreciate you guys coming out here. I appreciate everybody that took the time to come out here. Mostly I wanted to speak on our safety. We've been working with you guys, RMA, and Ivanhoe Schools, been doing great with us, Leadership Council. We've already been working together. There's already projects in mind, but I also wanted to re-bring up Road 160 and intersection, 160 and 328. When I went and even spoke to the triangle, our businesses around there, they're talking about kids crossing late at night, and it's dark. You can't see, like even to try to take a good picture, I can't take it and show what I'm trying to show. And so, I'm thankful that we've gotten so much work done already, but I know that we still have a lot more work to do, and I know each one of you guys have your own districts that are, you know, busy and stuff. So I am thankful, but I hope that we, you know, we keep in mind that we still have a lot of work to do. And I appreciate you guys coming. I just wanted to like, that's another issue that was recently brought up. And then once again, with that same, another mine road was Avenue 327, we haven't brought it up with RMA or you guys before, or maybe before it was then, but there's no sidewalks on the north side of it, and so there's no gutters either. So those houses have been, they'll flood once rain season comes in because of the way the roads are built. The water drifts down to the west, and so those houses will have flooding going into their homes. And so, it's just something that maybe we can be proactive this year and find a part-time solution and then eventually get a permanent one. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request for Esmeralda Garcia.
Hi, my name's Esmeralda Garcia, 15958 Avenue 327, here in Ivanhoe. I'm a resident of Ivanhoe and have been for over 30 years. My main concern, I'm sure with a lot of our residents here, community members, is safety, like Myra had mentioned. Roadways, sidewalks, lighting, transportation, pesticides, and opportunities for our youth are things that I feel are a major concern. With roadways, many of our streets need extensive repairs. There's extreme wear and tear, potholes, so vehicles that we drive also become damaged because of it. Our sidewalks, there's high hopes of immediate installation of state-regulated sidewalks to make it easier for pedestrians to safely commute by walking or if they're in a wheelchair. Hopefully, if there was a bike lane, I know my son loves riding his scooter, but it's, he really can't because there isn't, maybe not with the bike lane, but because of the sidewalks, there isn't sidewalks everywhere. Okay, so visible crosswalks is a big thing, which allow all pedestrians to be easily seen by drivers during all times of the day, especially at night. There's been many fatalities that have occurred here since I've lived here, and that's been over 30 years. Streetlights are needed for safety, not only for pedestrians, but also for drivers as well. Although we have dim lighting, I feel or believe that LED lighting may be more, would help our community be safe. Commuting to the city is often done by many of our community members by using like the TCAT service and the city busing. So I also believe a well-laid and appropriate bus stop area that's covered due to weather would be appropriate for us to have. With our youth, there are future leaders, but without opportunities and a safe location for them to have, they sadly find negative ways to spend their free time in our small town. Youth center or possibly a family resource center would be ideal for our youth and possibly for our families to be able to go to. Finally, agriculture surrounds us, and it is very important for many of us, maybe like a source of income, but also the chemicals that are sprayed to keep up the crops affects us health-wise by breathing it and then it going into the ground, which affects the water that we drink. So helping create a safe barrier, maybe by planting more trees. I know it has been mentioned before about more trees and plants and possibly a park being created here at Ivanhoe School. And that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time and consideration for our desperate need to help make Ivanhoe safe for everyone.
Thank you. I have two other requests, but I believe they're for specific agenda items, so I will call upon those later on in the meeting. Are there any other, are there any other public comments? Did you want to speak now? Oh, go ahead. Please state your name and address. Whoever's ready.
I have one form for a public comment. One was for...
For item 18?
One for item 18 and then one for a public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Blanca Escobedo. I work at Leadership Council. I'm a policy advocate, and I want to thank everyone for being in Ivanhoe tonight, and since we are here this evening, and the county just adopted a community plan where pesticide exposure was raised as a critical concern, we want to make sure that the county is taking the steps in studying the feasibility of agricultural buffers and to ultimately adopt an agricultural buffer zone policy and that public health and quality of life are at the front and center of such efforts. Pesticide exposure and application has been a major concern for not just Ivanhoe residents. We heard it here tonight, but a majority of other fringe communities in Tulare County who face the unaccounted-for impacts of agriculture. It's important to recognize that while Tulare County may be among the leading ag producers in the state, we are falling behind on protecting our own residents from pesticides and worsening groundwater quality. Additionally, other ag practices such as walnut harvesting creates dust storms that can have serious health impacts. Residents have voiced concern that this issue arises unexpectedly, which is unacceptable when their kids are playing outside their homes just yards away from the groves. The dust from these practices can infiltrate the lungs and the heart and make it worse for those who are already suffering from prevalent conditions such as asthma. We therefore respectfully request that you direct staff to provide an update on the county's efforts to adopt an ag buffer zone policy and to share what the plans are for the community engagement process by the end of the year. And we are happy to work with you to develop a community engagement process. We look forward to working with you, county staff, and Tulare County residents and stakeholders on this very important issue.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. I'm George Rodriguez, principal at Ivanhoe Elementary School, address 1630 Avenue 332, Ivanhoe, California, 93235. Just wanted to publicly thank the supervisors for hosting a meeting here today and for all the services. We had an issue a couple of weeks ago in regards to some debris out in front of the school. I called Eddie Valero and asked if he could assist us. We are an unincorporated city, and within minutes, we had some services and some gentlemen out here helping to clean the streets. So special thanks to all of you for making that service available to us, to Sheriff Boudot and the sheriffs for the NFL Flag Football League that we just recently began here at Ivanhoe. It's great to have our kids involved and having fun and being safe. So again, special thanks. Let's have another meeting next year. Thank you for everything. We appreciate you all.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Jarrod Verdusco, and my address is 23164 Offshore Road, Ivanhoe, California. And I have basically the same, not same issues, but I've been working with the Visey Unified School District, like Mr. Kinnon, last time we spoke about the park that could be built here, and Justice Guerrero almost pretty much assured me that they would maintain the park if the county would supply lights on the outside, and they would take care of the inside. There could be some talking between the county and the Visey Unified School District because they said they're willing to maintain it and remove the fence right here that's kind of just kind of in the way and just have a straight fence. And after 4:00 within the security act, just close them and have the people to come to the park and put trees and other stuff. All they would need to build is basically a basketball court out there, and everything is done, plant trees. And that sounds like a good idea. Justice Guerrero said they're willing to do it, and no land would have to be bought or none of that, and they would maintain it, then, I mean, it sounds like a pretty good deal. I don't know what you guys think, but that's my opinion. And also, I was going to say about the safety of the children. We did get, because ever since Thursday, March 24, 2016, I went to a TCAG meeting, especially about for bicycle lanes for safety, and then Safe Check from UC Berkeley came and gave the Visey Unified District a D in safety, well, this school, for children's safety. There is no sidewalks or anything. And I know you guys are working, and I appreciate all you've done for us because you've done a lot, and I do appreciate it. And that's just that the kids, well, they're kind of a priority, their safety. And another issue is also, this is kind of more to the school board, and this goes for all kids, but I got a note that says to the parents of, well, my child, he was hit in the eye by another student at the Hardest Festival, signed the paper, and it's up to you to be responsible for what happens while he was in school. And he's autistic, so he can't talk, so he can't really say much. And I already have an IP set up for the 18th, and I would like to know, because I'm pretty sure you, who, any of you have kids, they just tell you, your kid got hit in the eye, you know, and if he can't really talk, he can't explain it to you, you're kind of like, I want details, where, what, when. And they said it happened in Mount Whitney. It was at noon while he was still in school. And I got a copy if you guys want to see it later. I have a meeting with, well, basically, I'm going to do another IP and just bring up the situation with the Excel program to see what's going on because I find that kind of, because he can't tell me what happened. He said he got hit and hurt, and that's it. And I just want an explanation, and that's it. Because I think we should protect, you know, kids with special needs as well, not just, you know, the regular kids and all that. I mean, they all have the same, they had the same opportunity for an education, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board of Supervisors. Jacob Biggamas with State Senator Hattato's office. Being very brief today, just wanted to start off with the negative news that Senator Hattato did sign on to a letter to voice her opposition to the recupusing of 99 funds as one of the deadliest highways in the nation. And in the state of California, we think that those funds should be set forth for what they were voted on originally. And then also, on a much lighter note, our office has Red Ribbon Week certificates and various coloring books available for schools that request them from our office. We have a list going, and if there are any other schools within Tulare County, please reach out to our office at 559-264-3070, or see me after. That's all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jacob. Any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Elodia Woodruff, and I live at 15902 Chiata. And the reason I'm here, I feel kind of silly talking about this because there's so many other bigger issues that I can see, but my concern is the trucks that we have in our neighborhood. They're, I think they're just destroying the streets that we live on. Our neighborhood, we try to keep it up and keep it nice, you know, for all of us, but my, another... But my, another concern I have is the trucks are starting to park in front of their homes. And I've noticed too on Giata, which is a street that comes this way, there are two vehicles there that have been there for months. You can see the spider webs, you can see all the trash that's, that's under there. And we try really hard to keep our community clean, our sidewalks clean, the neighborhood, and we all try to help each other. And anyway, that's one of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Linda Anderson. I live at three twenty-six forty-six Eileen Road, Ivanhoe. I used to call code enforcement weekly. They never, ever came. We have like baseball, basketball hoops that are hit on the sidewalk. We have people who use their wheelchairs, have to get out on the street, go around. These people never get rid of them and they never move them or they sit on the street and they're in the way of the cars. And sidewalks that are bent, which causes accidents, cars that are five, he's got five cars in one driveway, they go out over the sidewalk. None of them are current, but they won't get rid of them. What is it with people and their old cars? There's a place for them. It's called a junkyard. And we have other things in our neighborhood, people that use their music. What I want to know is, I'd like a name of a number of a code enforcement officer and one that will come out and speak to us. I leave my name, I leave my number. They just do not respond to us. So if you give me that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Ezekiel Marcus, fifteen six eighty, Avenue three twenty-eight. Been living in Ivanhoe over thirty years. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out here and talking about the parks. I know it wasn't on the agenda, the director or guy in charge.
I'd like to think he's the director.
You didn't get a promotion, Aaron. I'm sorry.
Well, he's the man that shows up, so he's, he's our guy.
That's all good.
Talking about parks, that sounds awesome here in Ivanhoe. I know the sheriffs, their program with the football and I believe it's soccer too? Football, I'm sure. But parks, we've gone to Tulare, Visalia, the Mooney, the Lago, Plaza Park. We've enjoyed the fishing out there. And I know it's something for the kids. I know my, my boy and my nephews, they enjoy it. And I have a lot of friends that go out there, they enjoy it also. And it's something to get them away from, you know, video games or being out in the streets, you know, getting in the trouble. So I think that for Ivanhoe, it's something you guys should take into consideration and maybe drop a plan where we can get a park, at least get it started. Maybe one day we'll have a, a little lake in there and, you know, have our own fishing derbies out here. And thank you, guys. I, we enjoy going out there at Mooney. I remember Mr. Kinnon.
I was gonna say, we got fish at Mooney's Grove too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Connie Vela Solorio and my address is three two six four one, Road one fifty-six. I'm only gonna say thank you for coming into our little community and would like to tell all the community, community members that we're going to be having a cleanup this Saturday from eight to twelve. Thank you, Eddie. And it's going to be in front of the fire department and the parking lot of clinics. So hopefully everybody will be there by eight to twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and we'll go to our consent calendar, items four through fifteen. I know item five, we have a correction to make for item five?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I need to make an oral correction to the total cost listed. It currently reads as two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is an error. It should read two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Very good. There any items wishing to be pulled by members of the board for separate consideration or comment or members of the public?
I'd like to pull item four just for a quick comment.
All right. Pull it?
No, I'll just-
What we saying now?
Yeah, if you want.
No, I just, I'm very happy to see Miguel from the Housing Authority get a seat on the Task Force on Homelessness. We've been meeting for a couple of years and that's kind of been maybe not a missing piece, but somebody that we, you know, the Housing Authority plays a major part. So I'm just want to say I'm very glad that Miguel will be joining our task force.
All right, good. Any other items which should be pulled or commented on separately? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Moved by Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Madam Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Supervisor Cracker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll go to our not timed.
I just wanted to just say something before individuals from the community of Ivanhoe, if you end up leaving, but on Saturday's event, and sorry, I didn't mention it earlier. So this event will be partnered with Waste Management and CSET. And so there will be an allocated time where people from the residents of Ivanhoe can actually go and take your trash. And so if you want more information, I will direct your attention to Myra Basara, who's raising up her hand. But there will also be a community cleanup day and the individuals will meet as residents in front of Guadalajara Market at seven thirty to go out and clean the community because we do have that site with the help of Waste Management and CSET.
Very good. All right. So you got, you got your plug twice. Get your cleanups in. Item sixteen, we have a presentation from the Arts Consortium regarding their designation as official arts council of Tulare County, as well as designate the Arts Consortium as the official arts council of Tulare County from January first, twenty twenty to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Ampelio?
I've probably asked you more in the last couple of weeks and years. It's good to see you.
It's very good to see you too. Thank you very much for having me and thank you for being here. It's really great to hear, everybody. So my name is Ampelio Mejia Perez. For anybody who I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, I am the general manager of the Arts Consortium. We, through the designation of the, of the Board of Supervisors, we are Tulare County's Arts Council. I'd like to acknowledge Rita Verde, who is our president, and MJ Estes, who is our board member. We, as the Arts Consortium, we bring together artists, organizations, art enthusiasts and, and businesses in order to promote, provide Tulare County residents and businesses opportunities to create and celebrate the arts. We, at the Arts Consortium, we really believe that the arts are essential for mental and emotional well-being of our community members, namely through positive expression. We work to make the arts universal, affordable, and accessible to everyone regardless of age, capacity limitations, or language. Our objective is to, within the arts, strengthen our community, add to the beauty of our environment, record our history, contribute to the local economy, and create opportunities to increase creative efforts. We try to do our best to have as much to do with the arts as possible. We are very, very excited that, at the beginning of this year, we had our South Valley Art Tour happen. We focused on art studios south of Highway one ninety-eight. We featured twenty-eight artists at more than two dozen locations. We are actually having that come back in twenty twenty. It used to be a biennial event, now it's every year. So on March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of twenty twenty, we are hoping to have as many, if not more, artists showing now at the north end of the county. We are still inclusive of artists who wish to show their work even if they live on the south end of the county because we opened up the Arts Consortium for them to display their work there. We've got the My Voice Media Center, and I'll talk a bit more about this later, but just to note this now, we've got a, we've got a pilot program going on with the COS Health Department, which is called the Unplugged Cafe. And this allows college students an opportunity to interact with each other away from technology. So that's the only, that's the only catch is that you can't have your cellphone on, you can't have your laptop with you, you got to go in there and talk to people. This is allowing for meaningful conversations and we're finding that often it regards their state of mental health or that of someone significant in their lives. So we're able to kind of reach out to them and invite them out to, to a lot more things, kind of bring them in our community. We're also looking to expand the aforementioned program to, to provide the NVS, NVMC-style services to youth facilities like Children's Mental Health Services or Turning Point, which serve young, young people in our county. Well, another initiative that we champion is Poetry Out Loud, which is actually a national-level poetry recitation competition with more than a thousand students participating throughout Tulare County. This is in partnership with the Tulare County Office of Education and it allows artists, a lot of students to choose works from an anthology that's nationally recognized and it pairs them with coaches so that they can learn how to deliver powerful performances and allow our Tulare County youth an opportunity to earn a spot on a national stage, which is a really big deal. Just coming out of Tulare County, you can see the, the joy in their faces and, and really the excitement that, that comes with being chosen as the best. We are also partnering up with the Tulare County Museum, namely the Museum Alliance, to start what, what we call an emergency preparedness network, which we have prominent partners with Arts Visalia, the Exeter Courthouse Gallery. And we're looking to establish a network of cultural and arts organizations with a common goal of mutual assistance in time of crisis. We've been attending workshops with the California Arts Council and, and other folks and we're, we're just kind of hearing that the best, best way to prepare is to be prepared. And really that reaching out to those national-level folks is, is great, but it's, it's better to be prepared here in our, in our home, hometown, home county. We also have had, you've mentioned it a couple of times, the, the arts placement at Government Plaza, which we were extremely thrilled to, to bring to fruition. We want to thank Brooke Sisk, Maria Eva Navides, Janet Saragosa, Alexandra Vanderpoel, Katerina Serna, Noah Whitaker and his team of sound techs, geniuses, the Redwood Quartet, and all of our Board of Supervisors for your presence and, and support. Also, let's see, we've got, we've contributed to Tulare County Office of Education Arts Master Plan, which is hopefully bringing the arts back into education. Even though it was part of the, the curriculum, it was kind of rushed through or maybe, maybe there was just not enough resources. So with, with help from Tulare County, they were actually, Tulare County Office of Education, they were actually able to put together a comprehensive plan to, to kind of make sure that the arts thrive, not only in, in the adult stage, but also all throughout, throughout K through twelve. We've got the fiscal agency program that we're very, very proud of. This means that we mentor individuals or organizations in their, their beginning stages of, of organization. We've got the Veritas Art Center in Lindsay, the Maldonado, well, the Veritas Art Center is a gallery and they also have a lot of arts and cultural events there. It's on right, Sweet Briar Street, right across the street from the plaza there. And Lindsay, we've got the Maldonado Institute for the Arts and she works by putting artists in schools and, and I think she's working with Tulare High at the moment. We've also got the Tulare County Theater Boosters who provide support for Tulare County Office of Education Plays. And our first Saturday open art studios are taking off, they're doing amazing things. Shirley Keller is one of our local artists. She, she's directing that and having an amazing amount of success with that. We've, I've already kind of touched on Poetry Out Loud, so that's another one of our special programs. We're really, really happy to have that. The My Voice Media Center is, among other things, an outreach and advocacy program for adults who have any kind of experience with mental illness. And through this, they're able to create art under the supervision and instruction of professional working artists, which is a big deal because these artists are coming to them with a whole different, whole different perspective. And they're kind of teaching each other sometimes in, in how to communicate because it's such a different environment, but it's, it's really amazing and we've seen amazing growth from individuals. And now because of that growth, the My Voice Media Center is helping four times a year with what's called crisis intervention training for Tulare County police and sheriff officers in order to allow individuals to share sort of a best practice approach or how to employ, yeah, best practices while engaging an individual suffering from a mental health crisis. And that's, that's been incredibly powerful to us and just again, the, the amount of expressiveness that we've seen from these individuals and the change in them and, and really the response that we've seen from police officers and, and sheriff officers has been really extremely meaningful. We have been, for the last few years, sort of nomads. We've been going from place to place and, and seeking for a, a spot to land and we're really, really excited to, to say that the long-lasting conversation that my predecessors and some of the, actually both of the, of the board members here, helping me represent the Arts Consortium, have had this conversation going for a long time with South Help Enterprise. And so they've actually purchased the lumberyard in downtown Visalia and will be sort of a, a part of their, a part of their scheme there so we can provide services, not only to their resident, residents, but also to the downtown Visalia area and beyond, which I think is actually going to change the face of the arts completely because we're actually going to be able to retain some of our local talent, not just professionals who maybe can't afford to practice here, but also the youth getting out of college who has that drive, who has that, that talent and we'll be able to hold on to them and, and really, really push them. There's something really special about creating in a group. There's, you can always create on your own, but there's something special about creating in a group or in a block with, with a bunch of people. And, and we're really lucky that the Self Help Enterprises has really taken up on our partnership and, and we're going to push through that. The magazine that I just passed out to you guys just came off the presses today.
We can smell it and tell.
Very, very excited that I was able to bring that to you guys. And on the very front is one of our, our most prized activities is the annual cover contest that we put on. It's a five hundred dollar prize to any artist who can provide a picture of a work of art that they've created that represents a person, people, culture, history, or landmarks of Tulare County. The winner this year was Tamara Elliott. She created this beautiful watercolor rendition of California with some of her favorite parts of our area here. And again, we're, we're really, really happy that that, that that is going on. And again, we've opened it up completely. So now, now a basket weaver can take a picture of their basket and submit it to, to this contest and be recognized as well. We, let's see, we are having our Arts Festival this Saturday. There's a lot going on this Saturday, so maybe once after you're done tasting apples or once you're done cleaning up, you can come out to downtown Visalia and join us for Taste the Arts. It's our tenth annual celebration. More than a hundred artists are going to be lining, lining the street of Garden, Garden Street, selling their, their beautiful work, selling their, their, their crafts and, and kind of educating folks. They're more, we, we really encourage these artists not only to just say, hey, buy my stuff, but really to educate people that come to their booths and say, this is how I make it, these are my materials, this is my purpose, and hopefully engage folks and encourage them to, to really jump on the, the creative bandwagon that we've got going on. Let's see, I usually forget something, but at the moment I think that I can go on to the next slide. These are our, just quick data from the My Voice Media Center. In total, we've got about four hundred and seventy participants, and I say about because I'm sure that we got some new ones today, I didn't put them in, and about five hundred and sixty individual weekly art-making sessions per year. This is counting July first, twenty eighteen, to June thirty of twenty nineteen. And all those sessions are offered at either three-week or twelve-week session intervals. Then just some of the highlights of what we've got going on. We've got participants sharing their work, like I said, through crisis intervention trainings. We've got them setting up information booths at art fairs or health fairs. We've got these My Voice Media participants coordinating their own events in, in places like Tulare for, for youth. We've got folks getting chosen for, for specific, you know, displays or, or having their videos shared with PBS. We're, we're really, really, really excited about all the progress that we've got going on. And, and again, with all the other partners that we've got going on like CSET that allows us to, to bring folks that we call volunteers, but really we're, we're kind of taking that mental health part of it and allowing them a little bit of work experience while engaging them in the arts as well and then seeing all that creativity come out of that. and then seeing all that creativity come out of that. Again, First Friday is something that happens every first Friday of the month at between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. We have between five and 13 venues participate in the downtown Visalia area every first Friday, trying to get it to expand into Tulare, into Three Rivers, into Porterville. Talking to some folks down in Porterville, hopefully we can get this going. They just had a really awesome Arts Festival, the first one. And hopefully I can be more involved in that next year as well. Taste the Arts, again, special programs, again, just really, really excited about this. We've got 138 individuals in our membership and 27 Tulare County businesses that support us and come out and help us out every year, whether it's actually putting on our events or donating to our cause. Finally, for everything that you do and all the support, I'd really like to thank the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and all your staff. You guys are amazing and really, we would not be here without you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the board?
No, I would just like to thank Ampelio and all the folks who are part of the Arts Consortium. I remember when it first came together, you know, everybody was kind of doing their own thing throughout Visalia and the county and it came together under one umbrella, I think it's been very successful. I apologize, I won't be at Taste Arts this year, I'm usually there. But I do have a friend whose daughter started, you know, doing art a few years ago and it's given her an opportunity, I think she was in the eighth grade, she might be a sophomore now. She actually has a booth there, so it's something to be creative and be an artist, but to be out and sharing your work and selling your work, it's really incredible. So, thank you for the opportunity that you provide for that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Just a quick comment, I just want to thank the Arts Consortium and thank you, Ampelio. I know this, I am probably the only board member that even, or maybe even the only person in this room that remembers when there was a controversy over designating the Arts, Official Arts Council in Tulare County. And I think we absolutely made the right choice, you've done a fantastic job. The group that you work with and the group that you pull together to make sure that art is inclusive and is not just limited to incorporated cities is very important. And your efforts to continue to spread the arts throughout the county into the unincorporated areas so that all can participate and enjoy the arts is really to be commended, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
And happy to support the continued designation.
Thank you.
Any other comments by members of the board or members of the public? Thank you, we've made some great progress and I love, in the magazine, it also shows some depictions of the Bear Creek Bridge. And even though there's not, doesn't get a whole lot of traffic if you're driving up to Balts Park, you'll see the nice depiction, so trying to incorporate art in a lot of different aspects, so it's very good. This is an action item to designate the Arts Consortium as...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of designating the Arts Consortium as the Official Arts Council in Tulare County.
We have a motion by Supervisor Shucklian.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Valero. Any further questions, comments? Oh, well, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the votes?
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And just briefly, although, just like to thank you for making your work relevant. I know that the work that you do is done with community and passion in mind. And so, again, thank you for that and continue the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to item 17, receive a presentation from the Fire Department regarding the Extra Help Firefighter Program.
And while Charlie's coming up, I'd like to make one more thank you to Principal Rodriguez for turning on the air. I spent a lot of time in Principal's office in my day, thank you. Getting a little chilly now, though.
The Eric, Mr. Workswell.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Gray, Ms. Peterson, and of course, Melinda and all the IT staff. I have a golf tournament I'm supposed to play on Saturday and Mrs. Norman reminded me, she goes, "You realize you have that part event for the Norman kids, right?"
I was wondering about that.
Exactly, so two of the three Normans kid, one of the Norman kids is anti-establishment, so she will not be participating in that. Good evening, just wanted to provide a brief update with newer board members. I'm sure Supervisor Vanderpoel's heard this spiel before, but just to update things on volunteer firefighters, extra-help firefighters within Tulare County Fire Department. Volunteer firefighters have always been the backbone of the fire service. From our earliest firefighting, was done with Ben Franklin in the 1700s. In California alone, there are over 100 combination fire departments and there are over 1,000 fire departments nationwide utilizing volunteers. Although volunteerism is down somewhat in this day and age, as you see it in service clubs, it is still a vital, important component. So, I'll briefly touch on history, training, some of the recruitment-retention ideas, the cost of fiscal impacts, and then any direction or questions you might have about the program. Am I good or do you have this? Right here, this is good, okay, I knew that. Okay, history of the Extra Help Firefighter Program. It's been in existence since the earliest formation of government services. Until recently, firefighters were performed at a time when community services and volunteerism were higher. It used to be that we had a 30-year volunteer firefighter that would serve solely for the purpose of serving their community. You know, just recently, Carl Corley from Exeter Station 11, Bob Barnes from Dinuba, and Joe Bailey in South County. I mean, these are people that put in 30, 35 years without missing beat, not wanting to be full-time firefighters, but rather serving their community. They've been the backbone of our department, they've helped us, they've utilized, they've done so many things on the periphery, day-to-day. And what's happening now is we're getting less community orientation and we're getting the person that wants to come work two to three years and then becoming a full-time firefighter. Was that a yawn directed at me?
No, it wasn't, your presentation is riveting, Chief.
We're in Slide 1. So, we're being, you know, Department of Labor is showing a very big decline in the volunteerism these days. From a training standpoint, from the beginning, and CalFire had the contract long, long before, in the late 20s. So, in 1996, we did, it was easy, you'd come out, you'd do a couple of weekends, you'd pump an apparatus, you'd drive, you'd have some basic training, and you were good to go. And as CalOSHA, state and federal mandates were increased, we have this combination. Currently, around 2019 years ago, we had to increase it to 148 hours of training. We tried to meet that mandate and when the department was first formed in '07, and we increased that to 84 hours. And this covered our NFPA, our CalOSHA standards to where we were legal. In 2014, we upgraded that to 92 hours and included live-fire training, as well as CSTI, California Specialized Training, State Institute Training, were added to cover some of the hazmat items. As we work forward to 2015 to present, we have more of a linear setup. It's 148 hours of training time, we meet the NWCG, the National Wildland, because our volunteers, our extra firefighters do go out with us on these campaign fires. So, we can't have a lesser-trained individual going out with full-time paid staff, it's a safety item. These are the first folks on the line that are serving the community. And we have to Title 22 for EMS, where they have basic EMR, they're not quite EMT-trained, but it's more intense training, they get an additional 30 hours for EMR training. All this is based on CalOSHA, NFPA 1001. It goes through some basic fire science, dawning-doofing, PPE, personal protective equipment, hose handling, personnel safety on incidents, ladders, traffic accidents, vehicle fires, then vegetation and wildland management. As far as ongoing to stay current, we have a minimum training of three hours of training time per month and then an additional three hours of company, multi-company drill. As we work, and we're seeing so many of these things in the foothill communities and mountain communities, people not being able to get insurance. So, the ISO Insurance Service Office rating is rated from 1 to 10. And in order to keep our ratings, that even some are outlying areas at an 8 Y, we have to have so many mandated documentable hours of training. And they also go through, as far as laws and standards, RT 130. So, once they get the initial hours of wildland training, they have to supplement that every year. And in trying to retain, to train, to make our extra help personnel, our volunteer firefighters better, to give them tracks, we offer advanced training. We have a firefighter two-step, we also have engineer. So, and, you know, much like Ricky Bobby, driving a fire engine is probably the greatest thing in the world. It's, you get to drive fast, you get to run red lights when appropriate. It's the best position in the fire service. So, we offer that opportunity for them. And then our full-time entry-level position now, we're recruiting at the lieutenant and fire apparatus engineer level. So, it gives our local labor market a great shot at getting employed. Here, we have some very harsh realities on what we have as far as extra help. We are actively recruiting since, I've been with the department for a little over five years now and it seems like we would recruit based on a station recruitment basis. And we would hire 40 to 50 a year and then we'd lose 60 a year, so our attrition rate was bad. As we look through this, Exeter and Goshen seem to be about at 50%. We have 442 allocated positions, we're currently at about 128. What we're doing to combat that is we're doing a batch recruiting effort. We have approximately 200 applicants that we're doing annually. We'll run these through interviews this fall, go through our backgrounds, our medicals, and then those will hit an academy starting in January. They'll do the 148 hours and then we'll be back out in the field. And in order to try and streamline some of these processes, and again, trying to streamline government processes and complying with OSHA is very challenging, we're also doing a firefighter bypass. And what a bypass is, is somebody that comes in and has firefighter one, EMT one, has credentials, we'll do a brief orientation, safety training to make sure they have it and then we'll be able to put those people on the line. And we, right now, we currently have eight people in bypass, so pending backgrounds in medical. Any questions, I'm kind of covering things fast, seeing questions thus far? Okay, perfect. The cost of this, once we do this, once we figure it out, initial investment on an extra help firefighter, volunteer firefighter in this day and age is about $7,900. So, this includes our instructor time, our staff time, recruit academy time, uniforms, and instructor overtime. So, the actual cost, when they hit the door, hit the 148 hours is $7,900 per person. Annual ongoing cost to maintain the CalCap unemployment, extra help personnel, and this is as of January 1, 2019, which minimum wage is going up again. We're looking at about $4,470 per firefighter. And a five-year average annual cost is just under $600,000. So, it is a great program, it's great for community involvement, volunteers do such a great service for us, but it is expensive. Accomplishments, on an average, doing the math, divisible by the number of stations, the number of calls, each average extra help runs about 83 calls per year. They provide valuable resources so that some of our 1-0, or many of our 1-0 staff stations, they provide valuable resources based on their location, they can get there simultaneously or even sometimes in front of our apparatus. They've been a great recruiting tool for us. I think our rookie school now, we have eight applicants, so eight rookies in school, six of those are from our extra help program. So, we're doing a good job of what we wanted to do when the department was formed, we're hitting that local labor market. And they've also been a great pub ed, they've done great for our community because everybody sees the firefighters coming out to the schools, coming out, they love them. But when they see people that are in their community that are working day-to-day jobs, they love them even more. And it's also been a great tool for our true mortality efforts. We've been able to recruit and retain, and again, some of this true mortality work we're doing is some of the hardest, most arduous work. And we can see, we have 20 people now, I can definitely see six to eight of those people getting hired in the next year or two. As we look forward, look to the future, again, we talked about instituting a bypass program with a brief orientation. I think increasing the retention rate for extra help as far as recognition, when we have our annual picnics, having a Volunteer of the Year Award, trying to do some of those. We're doing okay around the population centers, but you get to early March, you get to Badger, you get to some of these outlying communities, there are some challenges with that where we're going to either work on some posting or look at some potentially stipend pays for getting these firefighters into the community. Because Tulare, Dinuba, some of the population centers Visalia are great, we have a lot of people. Exeter and Rosy, smaller populations, but for some reason, those stations do very well. We have a lot of recruitment and retention in there. Increasing the activity levels, trying to get people involved, again, having the cycle, if you're there three to four years, two to three years, and you're not getting that employment, that full-time employment at that point, that's kind of our target, that's what we need to concentrate on, creating those opportunities to where we can retain volunteers. Now, that was pretty quick. This is all I have for you, just kind of an update, and we have a lot of new board members, just kind of wanted to cover anything that you might add. Great program, these folks are paid, minimum wage, but they do a great job and it's a great recruitment tool for us. And you still, there's a few people out there that do this for the good of the order, for the good of the community. And I'd answer any questions you may have, there's a question slide.
Question from the board, Supervisor Valero?
Just brief, I actually want to thank your staff. My brother was actually, my younger brother was an extra help firefighter a few years ago. And I think for him, it was, he was part of a team. So, regardless of the fact that he was an extra help, he felt like he was also part of that community. So, just kudos to your staff for including them and knowing that their service is of great help.
Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
I was just going to make the comment, Chief, great presentation and the yawn was not, had nothing to do with you, just saying. But one thing that I did find very valuable that you did in early March was the fire camp. When you take those opportunities to bring in children or junior high, any age group, you might find yourself with some extra volunteers, especially if you can take that even into the high school arena. I think it also helps give kids some direction that have maybe thought about becoming a firefighter. So, the more that you can spread that program, I know that there's effort involved and cost there as well, but I think that would definitely help towards retention over the long term as well. But great job.
Thank you. There was a fireman that let me in, squirted some water, drank some water from a water fountain in Wood Lake when I was about seven years old, had a big impact on my life. Thank you very much, entertaining.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
I have another comment, it doesn't have to do this particularly, I just remembered from my supervisor matters, but I did attend the food trucks and fire trucks on Saturday in downtown Visalia. And Tulare County Fire was well-represented with the apparatus and I loved the little obstacle courses and the things that they did with the kids, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sorry I missed that photo op, I was still weed-eating.
Members of the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Sheer, 725 Westwood, Exeter, California. I was a volunteer for 39 years, I was a major part from 2005 to 2007 with the Tulare County Firefighters Association setting up this fire department to get started with. At that time, the Board of Supervisors said they'd do their darnedest to back the volunteer program. Something the volunteers, the supervisors might think about is get somebody from your human resource leaders to go and look in other parts of the state where they're running volunteer organizations, find out how they're retaining their volunteers. The biggest problem here in this county is they've got rid of all the older volunteers. You need older volunteers to hold on to the young ones. You don't have any older ones in there, you're done, and that's what's happened with this program. Exeter, for instance, 25 members, we never had anything less than 25 members for the 39 years I was in there. In 2010, they started getting rid of the older volunteers, they forced us out. Now, we have only but one, Gabe Espinola, who's been in there probably close to four years now. And unfortunately, he's getting to the point, he can't make all the calls. So, that's something you might think about doing, is getting out and going to other counties in this state, Northern California, put the resource in there, don't let the fire department go, you get your resources to go and find out how they're retaining the volunteers. Because it can be done and build it back up, but you've got to get the older ones back in there, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I would just add...
I would just add to that, that at RCRC, one of the things that we've advocated for in the past, unfortunately, it wasn't able to get through the state legislature, but I believe Senator McGuire has sponsored and authored legislation to make volunteer firefighter pay non-taxable from a state standpoint. That's something that we think would be very beneficial to help retain and recruit individuals. You know, the dollars, I don't think are much, you know. These people generally have day jobs. And so making sure that, that incentive to continue to, to be able to spread those dollars a little bit further is something that, that we've been supportive of. I just add that I think it's, as already stated, that, you know, the volunteer effort is very critical to our county. We can't afford to have all the staffing needs that, you know, a department like Clovis or some of the Southern California cities have. But that doesn't mean that volunteers can't help supplement the needs of, of our communities. And I think that best practices, I think that that's something that our board has in the, in the past has always supported, looking out and seeing what best practices are from other counties. So I encourage the efforts to, and the looking to the future as far as how do we retain additional volunteers and recruit more. So very good. I appreciate the presentation. And it's good to, good to see a different aspect of the department that we don't normally see. That's not an action item, correct? Very good. All right, we'll move to item eighteen, request from the Resource Management Agency to approve general plan initiation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Chairman Crocker, superstar, I mean Supervisor Eddie Valero, Supervisor Dennis A. Townsend, Supervisor Amy Luis, Chuck Lee. Supervisor Peter John Vanderpoel of the third.
Somebody did a little racist between.
Jason T. Britt, CIO. Dan Peterson of Council. Did I get ahead of myself? All right. I am Aaron Bach. I am the assistant director for the Resource Management Agency.
Soon to be interim again.
And I think this is my tenth presentation in this room. My phone number is five five nine six two four seven zero five zero. And just so everybody knows, we did issue a second violation letter to the constituent concern. And I think I've addressed most of the concerns, but we'll talk about parts later. We did complete a community plan for the community of Ivanhoe. Just, this board did approve that a couple of months ago. But we are here today for a general plan initiation for the Kingsburg and Delano area community plans and all necessary state legislative general plan amendments as required by new legislation over the course of the last few years. And I especially want to thank at this time, if this will work, Dave Bryant, our long-range planner, who's helped me put together this presentation and this agenda item. And as we've been discussing this over the last few years, it's time to, to move forward with this. But by request of the CIO, I was going to do a little bit of a educational material. My fellow alum here from Cal Poly should appreciate this, as I used to teach a little bit over there. So what is a general plan? Our general plan is the two thousand general plan update that will carry us through as a vision to twenty thirty. The state law requires a comprehensive long-range plan for future physical development. A general plan must address seven mandatory elements, land use, circulation, housing, open space, conservation, safety, and noise. But we didn't stop there in our general plan. We also have other elements, which I'll discuss in a second here. But also, what's very important to this board is there's a housing element that is treated separately. As we've stated before, ours is good through twenty twenty-four, no matter what Gavin Newsom says at this moment in time. In the San Joaquin Valley, we must also address air quality matters, as discussed previously today. You may have voluntary, potential optional elements. These include the ACFP, water, agricultural element, the planning framework. And I do want to discuss for a second the planning framework. This is what makes Tulare County unique from all other counties in the state of California. Some of those other cities and counties wishes they had urban limit lines that would last forever, but they don't. So they have to do it by ballot and initiative, and then put it into their general plan. Ours will stay in place forever. It creates the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which is a checklist that keeps us pretty much ag in the rural valley areas. And I'll show you our land use map here in a second, which also includes the foothill growth management plan and the mountain area plans. We also have a flood control master plan that's getting a little dated, nineteen seventy-one, and, and local hazard mitigation plan that was approved a couple of years ago, which does incorporate some of the language that's required in the future by the state for adaptation and resiliency, but we do believe needs to be updated as well. And state law establishes that each element is of equal importance and must be consistent with one another. And that's the most critical thing as we move forward, because there's so much new legislation, and not all of it is going to match up, that we need a general plan that does create consistency, even if there's state law inconsistencies. So one of the most important elements of any general plan is the land use diagram. And that is quite a land use diagram. You can see our urban area boundaries in the orange and our urban development boundaries, which does make us unique amongst all the light green foothill growth, oh, no, I'm sorry, rural valley lands plan area, the yellow areas, your foothill growth management plan areas, the brown areas are development corridors. And then you get into the mountain areas with your mountain area communities and your special areas such as Kennedy Meadows. So what is the difference between an amendment and an update? We are looking to do amendments. A general plan comprised an integrated, internally consistent, and compatible statement of development policies. So what that is a general plan. In maintaining a current general plan, shall periodically, every five to ten years, conduct a major review of the goals and policies report and background report to ensure the general plan is addressing the needs of the county. Issues identified will be addressed as part of the amendment or update. This is the most critical part to the GPI, because we are year seven, and staff has identified the legislative changes ultimately required by general plan amendments. So by definition, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research states the difference between an amendment is to accommodate projects, to update information and policies, or to comply with state regulations. That's exactly what we're talking about doing, such as the modification of a single policy or even the addition of a new general plan element, which we might be discussing as well. And mandatory elements may only be updated, the difference between an amendment or an update, maximum of four times a year. So we're not talking an update necessarily here. We're talking amendments. Planning framework implementation measure eight requires that the county general, do a general plan initiation for all community plan amendments and textual changes. And that's why we are ultimately before you today, is because our general, general plan requires it. Goals and policy report. The goals and policies report is one of the critical parts of our general plan. It's broken out into four components. So I underlined all the elements that we are potentially changing here, including the framework element, the agricultural element, land use element, the environmental resource management element, health and safety element, water resource element, sigma, animal confinement facility plans, which is just recently settled, and the transportation and circulation element, because now we're required to do vehicle miles traveled and no longer looking at level of service. So just to give you an idea of the timeframes we're talking about, because we don't want to overcommit or undercommit here, is about eight, plus or minus eighteen months to go through this process, which should be in line with our SB two funding that we just, we should get within the next couple of months. Also, at the same time, not that we slowed down by any way, shape, or form, the city of Kingsburg has made an application for a general plan amendment to the Kingsburg area plan. Since we were so successful with the Anderson Village, they wanted to hire us to work within that area to have some consistent policies and future development. While we're doing the north side, let's do the south side too. So the county is initiating the Delano area plan concurrently. We also got an application that the project review committee from the Zananzovich family to look at their properties around that area. So we're doing that. SB two, we just got the board's approval to go after the application for, to receive funding for the Building Homes and Jobs Act. It requires zone changes around existing communities, because we do want to pick up where they do have good existing infrastructure to create potential for home building and jobs. So we're thinking about, that'll take a year to eighteen months. SB seven forty-three, changes the California Environmental Quality Act traffic studies to look at vehicle miles traveled. AB seventeen thirty-nine, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which every board member is very familiar with. So currently, we are reviewing, and I took eight and crossed that eight and put nine, crossed out nine, I should cross out ten, eleven, and twelve, because we're reviewing twelve GSPs currently. We think that, that'll take three to six months, and this requires some study to what level of changes we need to make to our general plan. We've had requests from GSA managers to make one textual change to a couple of policies to a full sale, adopting their GSPs as part of our general plan. So it's quite a mixed bag out there. As far as SB three seventy-nine, that's climate change, adaptation, and resiliency. By the time of our next housing element, we have to address climate change and adaptation strategies in our general plan. This is probably better to get out in front of, because a lot of funding is going to be tied to this, especially for emergency funding in the future, especially regarding drought, sigma, and forest fires. As far as SB one thousand, that's an environmental justice element, or it could be an incorporation by reference. Fresno County did a two-pager. I don't think that was very successful. I think we could do better. But we are in discussions with leadership council as they are aware of this, and we will move forward through the process with that in mind. Again, Kingsburg, Delano, community plan updates. We do have an application from the city of Kingsburg to work with them on theirs. The zoning does need to change in that area. It's all A-one, AE, it's holding zone, and there's not a lot of development with that, even though the underlying land use is mixed use. So we'll be looking for zoning changes. And we did talk about SB two. We did receive some news today that we are in the second phases of the process for the application. So we should be moving to that third phase within the next upcoming weeks. And then a month from there, we should receive the funding to move forward on some of these things we talked about, including necessary zone changes, changes to the zoning code, and including housing policies that will help create housing and jobs. We did talk about vehicle miles traveled. Ironically, back in two thousand thirteen, they were going to do a lot of SEQA changes. And out of all those SEQA changes, we got an entertainment and sports park center for the city of Sacramento, and we have to change how we look at traffic. So that's mandatory, and we have to complete that by July of twenty twenty. So we have a ten-month burn, we have a consultant already hired. But all the, our general plan actually tells us what level of service is in the county, so we have to change some of that analysis for SEQA. As far as AB seventeen thirty-nine, the groundwater management act, we have to look at impacts to water resources with at least eleven GSPs. Hopefully, you get eleven and twelve today, tomorrow. We will need to implement some changes to policies. There, there's no doubt that we are going to need to look at this as a general plan level at some point. Again, better to be out ahead of this. We've been working with all the GSA managers, so we kind of have an idea of where we'd like to go with this, but we definitely need the board's approval and some general plan background so that we are vertically consistent with any changes that do occur because of sigma. And that's not to mention other, including plumbing codes or any other environmental health codes that may need to change, that need to be backed by the general plan, including ag policies and land use policies. Climate adaptation and resiliency in regards to climate change. You know, we did address this a little bit in our hazards management mitigation plan, but it was kind of late in the process, and we didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it. And I want to make sure that that's not hurting us in the future in regards to funding for flooding, drought, and/or fire. As I was saying, environmental justice element is required of updating two elements. Again, we are amending. We don't want to pay a short shrift. We do want to consider this as we move forward, and we'll work with HCD currently through the Civic Sparks Program to see what that could look like. And we'll be working with Civic Sparks Program and HCD over the next year to actually create a program or a plan that can be adopted as part of our general plan. So with that, that completes my report. And I see everybody's still awake. I didn't see any yawns. But I do, we'll entertain any questions. I know, I know it's a lot, but we do need to move fairly quickly on this.
Any questions, comments by members of the board? Members of the public? State your name and address for the record.
Blanca Escobedo with Leadership Council, one one nine Linda Vista Drive, Lindsay, California. Just want to say that Leadership Council is in support of the general plan amendments that will reflect the current needs of Tulare County residents and make it possible for the county to better address community needs. Our organization is happy to work with the county to make sure that these community priorities are reflected in the amendments as the proposed updates tie in directly with resident community concerns. As an example, as you've heard before, the county's application for SB two funds will help communities like Ivanhoe address the lack of adequate and affordable housing stock. And I just wanted to say kudos to RMA staff for being proactive and applying for planning grants and planning their hearts out.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I just, I think that one of the things that I think we need to look into, I'm very supportive of the Rural Valley Lands Plan, but I think there's an opportunity, and I don't want to open a can of worms, but an opportunity to add surface water to the checklist. Because in some instances, I don't know if this is appropriate now, but I know we're talking about agriculture and sigma, but you can have the best land in the world as far as from a, from a quality standpoint, the best ground. But if there isn't any surface water tied to it, then that really devalues the ability to develop that land. And so surface water is going to be a key component as far as whether or not we're able to continue to farm on, on this, on this land or some type of, so that's just food for thought. Again, I, I know that there's been a lot of work on RVLP, and so I'm not interested in, in wholeheartedly changing RVLP. But I, but I think that there is a missing element that when it was initially created that, that we didn't have this issue of, of surface water to the extreme. There was no sigma. And so that's, that's really kind of a game changer as far as I can see.
And if I could answer that, I agree full-heartedly. And I think that's one of our intents behind changing some of our water policies is they, it might even be contradictory to what you're saying right now, but I have heard from the planning director of Bakersfield, and that's kind of the direction, Bakersfield from Kern County, and that's kind of the direction that they're moving in. So we could be very consistent.
Yeah, easy with Ms. Oviat. Any other questions, comments by members of the board? This is an action item. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the initiation of the general plan and the, and the Delano-Kingsburg plans as well.
We have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, a second by Supervisor Chuck Lee. One other thing I wanted to add was that I appreciate Delano being a part of that. Councilwoman Grace Vallejo, she's mentioned that there was a need for coordination, so hopefully this will help with whatever they have.
Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Aye.
Supervisor Chuck Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item nineteen, receive a status update from the Resource Management Agency on current transportation projects, direct staff to take appropriate action to advance measure R funded projects. Mr. Shanky.
Good evening. Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. Happy to be here tonight. Hopefully, with due respect to the folks in Ivanhoe, this isn't as eventful as a meeting as the last night meeting was for me, where I was sitting in Springville, got a text from my pregnant wife that she was going into labor, so I had to race home. from my pregnant wife that she was going into labor, so I had to race home. So I'm going to put this here. I'd be real surprised if I get that same text again, but.
You won't be the only one.
Before I go into a little bit of detail on the presentation here, I do want to comment and respond to some of the things that were brought up during the public comment period. RMA hears you, and we appreciate and thank you for coming out and letting us know some of your concerns. I heard a lot of things about sidewalks, streetlights, lit bus stops, flooding in the streets, code enforcement, vehicle abatement. And a lot of those things are items that we, we're prioritizing and are aware of as well. We're doing a sidewalk project. It's a few years out, but on Road 60 here, 160 here in Ivanhoe, sidewalks both sides. Those, that was a location that was identified and prioritized as part of the community plan update. The crosswalk on Road 159 and Avenue 328, we're scheduled to go into construction on that next spring. Mention LED lighting, street lighting, that's actually a program that we're doing with SoCal Edison throughout the county is to replace all of the current lights with LED lighting. Lit bus stops is something. We're doing solar powered panels in the bus stops that get ridership during the evening. So a lot of things that we're aware of, too. And I noticed Mr. Grove walked out and followed the, the folks that made the comments about code enforcement and vehicle abatement. So definitely things that we appreciate hearing from. With that, I'll kind of cut to the chase. The ask here today is, should we ride along with the opportunity that TCAG has offered in a bonding option and advance some of our local program money so that we can bring forward some of our road construction projects? But before I do that, I did want to detail and give a little bit of an update on recent and upcoming projects that we've completed throughout the county here, specifically transportation projects. So we're trying a video here today, and of course, I picked the one time where the screen is conveniently located behind you. But this is just a slide that shows past five years' worth of projects based on construction cost. These are major capital improvement type projects. So street widenings, bridge replacements, new sidewalks, major overlays that have gone through the years. It doesn't include the probably 30,000 potholes a month that we repair. We do about 300 street signs, either replacement or updating every year. We restriped about 700 miles of roadway each year. So you can see, we've done about $53 million plus dollars' worth of construction projects in a few years, and it's spread throughout the county. It's, we've got 3,000 miles plus or minus of roadways that we maintain, and we try to get out everywhere, but it is a big county. But that said, I think the past five years have definitely been a strong showing for construction activity in the county here. Just a couple of highlights on recently completed projects. You can see we've done about 20 million just this year alone that we're really wrapping up. So this was a big year for us. Without going through all the details, you can see it's a range of projects from the 280 widening project in Visalia. Allensworth Elementary Sidewalk was a small project, about half a million, but it had a big impact to the community there. Avenue 152 Safety Improvements is a safety improvement project. So we're kind of running the gamut of what we're doing. Again, been very active this year. Upcoming notable projects, within the next two, three years here, we're scheduled to do over $30 million estimated worth of construction projects. You can see the list there. I won't read them all, but from improvements in Goshen, the Harvest Road Reconstruction Project, which is kind of a byproduct of the Betty Drive interchange there that was recently completed. Locally here, we've got a couple of bridge projects just to the north with 424, 392, 364, very active bridge program. We've got an Avenue 232 Safety Improvement Project coming up just to the west of us here in Ivanhoe. And then, as I mentioned, but not on the list because it is a little bit further out, is that Road 160 Sidewalk Improvement Project that we've got coming up. So again, I think we've been pretty active and pretty successful in obtaining grant funding, in using our Measure R project funding, and then also using SB 1 funding to spend that money and get it out on the street in the, as a projects. Before I get into the bonding, I did want to do a little bit of background on Measure R allocations. You're familiar with what Measure R is, but a little bit more detail is how the money is allocated. So there's three basic pots or avenues that the funding for Measure R, which is administered by TCAG, is distributed. There's the local program, regional projects or regional program, and then transit bike and ped projects. So the local program is basically the money that the county gets to use as a discretionary basis. For, for the county here, it's about five and a half million, 5.4 million annually. And we generally use that for improvements and maintenance projects. So that's the discretionary money. The regional projects are the projects that were specifically identified in the Measure R plan when it was taken to the voters. That's the Road 80, Road 108, the widening projects, some of the bridge projects that we've done. And the big one that we're coming up to now is the Avenue 280 widening project. We've done one phase, but there's two phases more there. And then the third is a smaller pot. It's the transit bike and ped money. So Measure R is, has been very successful in moving the regional projects forward. There's been opportunities to leverage that money and use state and federal funds, and we've accomplished quite a bit, and TCAG has accomplished quite a bit there. To take advantage of that, they're also, they're now looking at advancing future Measure R revenues and moving that to projects in the current timeframe by next year. So TCAG is looking at doing that, and they graciously offered the counties and the cities, the partnering agencies, the opportunity to kind of ride share along with that and take advantage of the, the good bonding rates that are available right now. So in that advance, we're talking about the local program money. So the, the regional projects, those are most likely going to be advanced pending TCAG board authorization. And what we're talking about today is, do we want to go along with that and bring forward some of our local program money, that $5.5 million annually, and move ahead with, with other county projects? So as I mentioned, these regional program projects, these are the interchanges on State Route 99. It's the Avenue 280 Caldwell Interchange. It's the interchange in the city of Tulare, both very big-ticket projects. We're also working with TCAG to advance the remaining two phases of Caldwell of Avenue 280. That's the section between Visalia and Farmersville, and then again, Farmersville to Exeter. And the cities are also looking at moving those projects forward. So hopefully, within the next five or six years, we'll have a full corridor there between 99 and Exeter. Another one that we haven't talked about too much, but that is on the table, and we're working with the city of Exeter, is two improvements, calling them between State Route 65 and Spruce. These are projects that were identified, kind of ancillary projects to go with the State Route 65 Expressway project that has kind of been put on the shelf. But these two projects were identified, there's funding for them in Measure R, and they both will provide improvements to the corridor there of Spruce and State Route 65. They're two projects that the city is very anxious to move forward with, and the county would have a strong role in that. So we're working with the city, and we're hoping to be able to advance that as well. There's other projects within the cities of Visalia, Porterville, and it's, and the other locations, but we're not as quite active or engaged in those because they are within the cities there. So talking specifically about the Measure R bonding, there's a couple of options available that TCAG has made, has offered to us. And these are both basically maximums to kind of limit our exposure or TCAG's exposure to bonding overall. So their option A or B, which I put them in, these are maximums, not suggesting we do the maximum, but they are a maximum there. So if the board decides, hey, let's go full guns, this is what we would be limited to roughly. A is 50% of our Measure R local program revenue, which would be allocated between 2020 and the remaining life of Measure R. So that's roughly $35 million of advance. The cost of that, because you're paying interest, obviously, would be about $46 million. So bringing it all forward. The flip side of that is that, okay, we've advanced it all, but we don't get that five and a half million for the remaining life of Measure R. Option B would be the short-term payoff. So it's 100% of our next four years Measure R local program revenue. So about $20 million advanced funds for the projects, and then after interest, the cost would be about $22 million. So again, maximum limits on what we could bond for or advance. Some considerations, obviously there's drawbacks and there's positives to advancing the money. The big one is kind of the interest versus inflation question. So conservatively, in talking with TCAG staff and some of their financial consultants, we're looking at less than 3%, but for sake of conversation, call it a 3% interest on any advanced bonds. I think that's conservative, but play it safe at this point. To compare that, we, we've looked at inflation construction, specifically construction inflation. And general inflation, you kind of rule of thumb 2%. Construction inflation is highly variable. It changes from year to year. You can see the chart there. For what, the types of projects that we do, a big driver is asphalt costs, and that's specifically related to crude oil costs. And crude oil, obviously, is geopolitically influenced. The president could make a text one day, and boom, oil prices spike, and our cost of projects have just gone up 50%. So you can see over time, the average is about 5.7% on asphalt. California labor cost is lower. It's about 2%, 2.4%. So we average that out, and we're calling it roughly a 4.05% discounting factor. So if you, if you trust those numbers, and again, when you buy stocks, they tell you past experience isn't a marker for future gains. Same thing holds true here, but we feel roughly that these conservative numbers, and that's what we would be looking at. So if that is the only consideration, then that bears out. Bring the money forward, get the project done now, and you get a better bang for your buck. Some of the other considerations, though, are the resources to deliver projects. I talked about the maximums. Could we do that much work? And big consideration there is the timeframe with which we would need to do that. The, the general rule on the bonding is that you need to spend the money, not just have the project started or programmed within three years. That's pretty aggressive for some of these projects, particularly the type that we're looking at here. So for example, Avenue 280, that's, that's not going to be doable with us. So we can, there are some, I guess, separate considerations that can be taken for those types of projects. But for the advance that we're specifically talking about, call it a three-year spend. So we're, we do have limited excess capacity for complicated projects beyond those that are currently programmed. We don't want this advance to negatively impact other projects that we currently have on the books. Project selection, if we do advance the funds, which projects are prioritized? How do we pick them? So we're suggesting relatively straightforward projects such as AC overlays on priority corridors. These are projects that don't require right-of-way acquisitions, utility relocations. We fear, we feel real comfortable that we can get them done within that three-year timeframe. So here's one proposal. It's not the only proposal, but it's one proposal. We could certainly do none. We could do the full guns. But here's kind of a middle of the road that we feel comfortable that we could do if we do decide to advance the money. It's take roughly 1 million years of the local program, the 5.5 million, advance that for the remainder of the life of Measure R. That would result in roughly $10 million for projects, dependent on what the, the payback or the interest rate is. Again, that would reduce our local program contribution from about five and a half to about four and a half million. And then utilize those funds on prioritized farm-to-market routes. These would be the AC overlays, the roadway rehab projects. We've got six locations identified here. That's $11 million worth of projects. We don't want to underspend the money. If we bond for it, we want to spend it. So we would like to identify more projects than we would have the money for. With the farm-to-market routes, these are projects that are on the to-do list. They're pretty much next in line, so it would be bringing those forward a year. But then the trickle-down effect is that everything else gets moved forward a year. So it's got repercussions beyond just doing these projects here. You can see the locations and then the map here. Again, if you recall, the farm-to-market routes are high-traffic routes with heavy truck traffic, heavy truck access. They're major goods movement corridors for the, the ag community, the farms, the dairies, the food processors. So these provide a big bang for the buck for our ag community particularly. Again, the locations are shown here, and this is about $1 million, or $11 million worth of projects throughout. So if directed by your board, the next steps would be to coordinate with TCAG for the bonding, the loan advance. Most likely, or most certainly, there would be a return to the board with an advance agreement. Timing-wise, this would be early 2020, probably in the January, February timeframe, with bonding to come forward soon thereafter. Under your direction, we can start and deliver these farm-to-market overlays for construction in calendar year 2021. So it wouldn't be next year, but it would be the year after. Really, we were going to be working on these projects anyways, because like I say, they're in the, they're in the hopper to move forward with. Separate from the advance, we will be, if TCAG decides to bond for the projects, initiating the design phase of the Caldwell project, and then also with your approval, collaborate with the city of Exeter on the Rocky Hill and Firebaugh improvements for that State Route to 65, State Route 65 to Spruce projects. So with that, happy to answer any questions or entertain your direction or comments.
Questions, comments from members of the board?
I'll make a comment.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, just, just been, in thinking about this and looking it over, and I think it's a great idea to get some maintenance done sooner than later. I think every dollar that we spend, besides the difference between the, the interest and the, and the costs, escalation of costs, also every dollar that we spend on maintenance, we're probably going to save several dollars in the future because the roads aren't as, aren't as torn up and aren't as deteriorated from, from weather. So I'm thinking that getting this, getting this in now, prioritizing the farm-to-market roads, and is a really good idea.
And Supervisor Vandepoel?
Just to make a comment, you know, when you started this presentation, I'm sitting here thinking of these regional projects and widenings, and it's, I thought you weren't going to talk about road maintenance, and then you hit the, the crux of it. I was really glad to hear that. I think a lot of people, a lot of taxpayers, think that they passed Measure R, and so they have an expectation to see all their roads fixed instantly. Now, that's not even possible due to the backlog that we have in the county, but I think advancing funds to get maintenance done now, more maintenance done now, makes a lot of sense. Very supportive. I like your middle-of-the-road proposal, your, basically the staff recommendation as opposed to the other two that you had highlighted. I think this is going to work really well. Very supportive.
Other comments, questions? Members of the public? Yeah, if you'd like to make a comment, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Meyer Becerra. My, do I need my address?
I think we have.
Okay. My question was just, I wanted to emphasize the two roads that you did speak about. That was 159 and 328 for spring of 2020? Okay, and that's like, aside from Measure R, it's already good for 2020? And then for Road 160, the sidewalk project, when is that?
2021.
2021?
Yeah.
For?
Fall of 2021.
Fall of 2021 for that part, that road construction?
Sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. That's what I want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think it's important to note that they could be Measure R funded, but it's not necessarily specific to what we're talking about today as far as advancing funds for local programs. So Measure R more than likely is helping, and it's part of that pot. It's just not necessarily as an action today. I just emphasize, or reemphasize what my colleagues have already stated. I think it's great that we're focusing on farm-to-market routes, farm-to-market routes. We have made that a huge priority for us from a legislative platform standpoint in Washington. And I think that this just goes to the point that we are putting our money where our mouth is. You know, we, we want help, but we're actually utilizing our own local dollars to help that out. These are critical corridors that help get goods movement to, you know, packing houses, cold storages, processing facilities. So. Any other comments, questions?
One other thing. Reed, could you address the option A versus option B, long-term, short-term payoff? Clarify, maybe recommend what you think.
So the recommendations, what, the, just the 10, 11 million over the?
It's taking a million dollars a year.
a million dollars a year?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the staff's recommendation is 1 million a year for the remaining life of Measure R to bring that forward. The alternative would be we could advance roughly 5.5 million for the next four years, so greater than 10 million. The, my hesitation on that is that it would wipe out our full allocation of the Measure R funds for the future, say, two years. I feel more comfortable kind of spreading that out over time and kind of looking from the, I guess, the financial standpoint, the, the, spreading it out over time reduces some of the risk of temporary changes in inflation there. Thank you.
Should we give our options, or are we kind of clear on? Because I know that for me at least, option A would be of best interest.
So when you say option A, what, what do you mean? As far as staff recommendations, spreading it out over the life of the, the loan? Yes. And are we, this is not an action item?
It is.
It is an action item. So if someone wants to make a motion of one way.
Mr. Chair, I will go ahead and make a motion to go ahead with staff's recommendation, the local program loans in advance proposal that was highlighted on page 10.
Very good. So we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by Supervisor Townsend. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, or?
Supervisor.
Madam Clerk, I'm, I'm ready to call the law. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I do want to thank Ted Smalley with TCAG, who's been very aggressive and.
Right. He has been, well. And he sends his regrets. He was traveling back from Irvine this afternoon. Next, we have item 20, board member request. Board members may make a referral to staff to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. Is there any items that we'd like to move forward with? Seeing none, we will wrap this up. Thank you for coming. May you adjourn.